Roll call. Trustee Cap. Trustee Bonner.
Present.
Trustee Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Greer. Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
And Trustee Claybrook.
Here.
Yes.
Are there any approval or corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that will take off on March 12, 2019? Any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes, I will ask for motions approved of the minutes as they are.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as they are.
Second.
Motion to approve by Trustee Claybrook and second by Trustee Greer. What take the roll?
Trustee Cap. Yes.
Rev it up. The mic is not all.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Trustee Bonner.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Before we open the meeting to the public, we'd like to know if you have any comments. If you would just stand up and give us your name and your reason for addressing the board, and we will hear what you have to say.
We're going to open the meeting to the public?
Yeah. Don't we always?
I thought you said before we open the meeting to the public.
That's what he said.
Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Has a motion to approve by Trustee Claybrook. We need a second.
A second.
Second by Trustee Greer. Greer.
Trustee Cap. Yes. Trustee Bonner.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed for meeting that's now open to the public. We'll start on this side.
This side.
Hi, my name is Tanya Davis. I'm one of the coordinators over at the Burnham Community Center. I just wanted you all to know that one of our events that we have over at the community center is our senior line dancing. We do this every Saturday morning from nine till, supposedly at that school, but some of the girls get a little frisky and want to keep on dancing, so we stay until about 12 o'clock, maybe a little late because we have a lot of fun over there. So you guys are all in, everybody, you'll have to come over there around nine o'clock to start, and we have other two instructors that comes out and teach us how to do the line dance. So even if you're beginners, because we were brand new and we had two left feet, now we learn right from our left. One of the other upcoming events that we have coming up is a CPR class. I don't have a date just yet for it, so keep watching out when I have a date ready. I posted here at the one of the clerk's office, and it also be over at the community center that'll be a free to the community as well, so you can come out and get your CPR card. Also, we're going to have emergency kits through Red Cross for kids where they make out these pillowcases, and it'll be emergency kits that the kids can do themselves, and then it'll be in the home. So if anything happens where a fire breaks out or anything, it'll be emergency kit that you all can actually use, grab, and run out the house with.
Oh, that's good.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments from this side? Any public comments from this side? Yes, sir.
My name is David Shea. I'm the resident of Burnham. Kind of want to make a statement, I'm not sure if that's okay, but two weeks ago on Tuesday night, my car was broken into in my driveway. I do have pictures of the person who did it. I have lights on and show who they were. First of all, let me state that I have utmost respect for the police department, always have, and for all of our first responders. This is not their fault, it's the law. The gentleman who took my report told me that was, they were not able to do anything because he didn't steal anything. And they didn't steal anything, they couldn't pull a report up. They would refer to the gentleman, the officer who handles robbery in the area, and they would see what they could do. The photographs that I took, I have a hand in camera, and were a bit grainy, so they couldn't see that. So the guy next to me has been broken into at least four months ago. On the, a couple of October, another gentleman, his car was broken into. And I keep asking myself, well, the door was open, so that's my bad, but it was in my driveway, that's my property. And when I thought about it, I said, he did steal something from me. He took my sanctity, and he took my space. And he took my, 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 uh, my ability to feel safe. And I don't know what we can do about this here, but I think something should be done where this thing can be processed through and get these, these people off the street who are doing this. Especially seniors are, 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 we have a target on our back anyway.
Well, let me say, if I may say, that if this has happened three times in a sequence, and this is, I mean, you did mention it the other day when I saw you, but.
Correct.
But the other two incidents was not mentioned, and we need to know if something like this happens, or maybe we can increase the control. So I would rather you have seen that it broke in one time than if it broke in three times without really thinking about it, so.
The situation was that because I, nothing was, nothing physical was taken, they can't do anything about it, and I don't understand this.
Okay, we're going to get you an interpretation, we'll, we'll have the police chief look at it.
I understand, you know, the guys are running thin, there, there, you know, there's not as many people as there should be working on something. I just wanted to make that statement to let you know that we're aware of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
And I'd like to comment on that also. If you see suspicious vehicles in the area, you can definitely call the non-emergency number if it's a non-emergency, eight nine one seven zero eight eight nine one two one two two, that's the seven digit. And you can report the vehicle and have it checked out, and tell why it's suspicious in the last seen location, if you think that it may be a safety concern, and we definitely have to be vigilant for our neighbors.
I'd like to make a comment, and, and as the mayor said, he will have the chief to, you know, talk to you. Each and every one of you all are important to us and to our community, and you, and we definitely all want to feel safe in our communities. So we cannot let this happen, we cannot permit this happen, and we will discuss it further.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments on that? Are there any other comments?
Yeah, my name is Jason Moore. I'm on a hundred and forty my cat. About two or three months ago, same thing happened in my block. This guy seemed like a dog SUV. They'll put beside you, turn their lights out, and they'll pull on your doors and things like that, try to get in your door. They also came into my yard to try to get into my car. So it's a dog SUV, it's two, two guys be together all the time.
Thank you for that comment as well, so the more aware that we become of these things, the more we try to address them. And many times, some people have got their car unlocked, or even more than on occasion, people have gone in the car, so we definitely pass that information along to the officials. Are there any other public comments? I will ask for a motion to approve the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to approve.
That's a motion to approve by Trustee Richardson, so we need to the public, we need a second. Second by Trustee Garcia. Please take the roll.
Trustee Cap. Yes. Trustee Bonner.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Trustee Greer.
Yes.
Trustee Richardson.
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now closed to the public. Thank you for your comments. As before, we're going to do it a little bit different tonight, so what we're going to do, we're going to have a presentation. Mayor Mr., I guess I pronounced it correct, from South Suburban Mayor's and Manager. You know, so when you're ready, we'll turn the lights out.
Thank you.
Now, this was a surprise, probably, for some people. Like, um, it was such proof that, uh, until we were ready that.
I'm trying to steer away as much as I can. Yes.
Kind of, talk to me.
Yeah, um, it kind of has to be, if that's okay. Thank you. So my name is Leslie Feimster. Sorry. Are you coming through? Sure.
I am the transportation planner for South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, and we are a council of government that represents forty-three municipalities in southern Cook and northeastern Will. So we do many things from housing and economic development. I, as the transportation planner, obviously help with transportation there. So the village of Burnham is one of our members, and I have been assisting the village in working on a grade separation of Burnham Avenue. So what does that mean, right? Well, I'm sure you all have sat at Burnham Avenue near Brainerd, because according to all the railroads, it's about three hours and eleven minutes a day that that crossing is blocked, which is really not doing a lot for the quality of life here, right? So by doing a grade separation, we will definitely be improving that access and the quality of life, and also the amount of idling that goes on there, so it'll be improving the air quality around this. And by having the trains be able to move a little quicker through there, if this is grid separated, it'll improve the air quality that way as well. Now, obviously, this will be, bring about more safety between 2007 and 2015. There were two-hundred-and-seventy-one crashes that occurred in this location. So obviously, with grade separation, that's going to make zero, right? We're not going to be having those same incidents occurring because of the railroad tracks. Of course, there's many different reasons for that. People try to go around the train, or making a U-turn, or whatever the case may be, trying to beat the train from going to that crossing. This is also good economically, so many communities that have had aggregate crossings for a very long time realize that once they get the grade separation in, it sort of brings character back to the roadway, and also brings people back to the roadway. So I'm sure, as you probably do, try to avoid Burnham Avenue as much as you can, because nobody wants to sit there for the three hours and eleven minutes that this is blocked in a day. So it helps do that as well, and sort of brings that character of community back to the roadway. Now, there are developments that are going in on the city of Chicago side, and I'm sure you've heard that Ford is investing as well, and so there's going to be more freight traffic and more people traffic, so this will also improve that as well. Obviously, it'll be easier for cyclists and pedestrians to get across here as well, and it'll improve any sort of crossing that there is to that. There'll be less noise, because trains won't have to blow their horns if there is a grade separation, so there's lots of improvements for this. And of course, emergency services. Right now, home and avenue or torrents are the only ways around this in order to access the other side of the railroad tracks, so this will give better access for any of those emergency vehicles that are there. Now, I've been working with the village for about the last year on doing a application for Phase One Engineering. Now, a new funding came about, it's called STP Shared Fund, and it is a funding opportunity for the entire region, but there is two-hundred-and-forty million dollars available. And the best part about this new funding source is that if you are a cohort four community, which Burnham is, you can get a hundred percent funding for Phase One. Now, most of the communities out there in the entire region don't get that option. They have to do Phase One themselves, and they only get eighty percent funding, so this is a really special opportunity that this grant came up. So Burnham did apply for the Phase One study through that STP Shared Fund with the Transportation Development Credits, which is where that a hundred percent funding comes in. So projects will be selected in July 2019 for comment, so go to CMAP's website, make comments, say how great this project is, and how good it will be for the community and the region, because that's what this shared fund is, is it's looking for big regional projects, and that's really what this is. It's going to impact the region as a whole, being able to do a grade separation of Burnham. Projects will get funded in November of 2019, and then after that, it takes about six to eight months to get an agreement with IDOT to be able to begin the work. So the earliest that it would be able to begin would be summer of 2020. But we have been working on this for quite some time, which is why I was here a couple months ago when the Complete Streets and Green Infrastructure Policy was adopted. We got bonus points for having one of those, or I'm sorry, Burnis, Burnham got bonus points for having those, so they got fifteen additional points just for having those policies adopted. Now, they did apply for three-point-eight million dollars for that Phase One Engineering, because I'm sure, as you've seen, different projects around the region, they're pretty costly to do a grade separation. So during that grade separation process, this is basically what Phase One is going to entail, basically, in the short scheme. I'm going to show you a slide next that might be a little bit different. And then these are all of the entities here on the right-hand side that will need to be worked with in order to make this happen. So it's a pretty long process. This is IDOT's for a bridge replacement, so not creating a new one, replacing an old one, and this is sort of their timeline for when that happens. Now, this is with IDOT, and IDOT having loads and loads of money to go, well, not loads, but money to be able to go out and have this programmed. The way that Burnham is doing the things are applying for grants so that they can have not a big cost that goes to the village, so it's going to take a little bit longer than this process has here. So I'm going to show you some other examples, I'm sure you're all familiar with this one, sort of how long projects take and how much they cost, right? We're all familiar with the torrents at 130th, it's right around the corner. So the planning process of that began in 2003, and the final construction was done in July of 2015. Now, this bridge cost a hundred-and-forty million dollars, or this whole reconfiguration cost a hundred-and-forty million dollars. So these are really large projects, and they take a really long time. But Burnham is in the process of making this happen and starting to move forward. So here's another example, it's Seventy-First Street, this is in Chicago, well Bridgeview, right by Toyota Park. And it began in 2002, and construction was completed in November of 2013. And this was with create funds that this was done, and that is money from the government in Chicago to help move freight, move through the area. So that had dedicated funding, and it was able to go through this process in about ten years. And then this one is Belmont Road in Downers Grove, and it has a metro station that's there as well, so it did a grade separation of the railroad tracks, and then also gave pedestrian access to the metro station. And that began in 2002 and completed in October of 2012. So it's a pretty long, oh, I'm sorry, this one cost eighty million dollars to complete. So they're very large projects. And then this is what we are looking at doing here in Burnham. Now, when I say grade separation, I don't know if that means over or under, and that's something that we will figure out in Phase One, but we won't know that until the time comes. And so we are looking at ways to be able to squeeze either a bridge or an underpass in this space, and do all of these great things, make a better quality of life here on Burnham Avenue, and in Burnham. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Did you say this is on a website?
Not yet, no. So in July, it'll be on CMAP's website, and that is when they are looking for public comment, so we need everyone here to go and tell CMAP how much you want this project and want it to move forward, and how great it will be for the region and your community.
So will you be back in another meeting to tell us when we're able to do that?
Sure.
On the website?
Yeah. Yes.
That's going to, that's going to separate us from Chicago again, like we did at Lawrence, it's going to separate us, but we have to hold each other this way or that way.
During the construction.
During construction, yeah, that's something that will be figured out in Phase One. So in that earlier slide, it had said, you know, how the whole construction is going to work. I know in Lansing, when they did the, I'm sorry, not Lansing, Linwood, when they did the grade separation, they built the bridge first and then closed the roadway, so that it stayed open the entire time, so it really just depends.
There is an option then?
There is an option, yes.
Okay, real quick, this be the last question, public comments, all right, come on, last question. Left, go ahead.
Oh, he's giving a like.
So the first phase of it, they have grants available, and there's like six phases?
Uh, no. There is Phase One Engineering, Phase Two Engineering, Design Engineering, and then Construction.
Okay, so there's how many phases?
Four.
There's four? And so the first phase is three to eight million in grants that we're applying for, and what about the second, third, and fourth?
So once Phase One is done, a lot more grant opportunities are about. So there's CMEC, which is congestion mitigation and air quality, and that makes it, because of all the idling and everything that happens around there, that can help pay for it as well. There is transportation enhancements, there's also some economic development money, because there's a new business going in on the Chicago side, and businesses like to come where there's a grade separation, because they know that they'll be able to have better access to all of these things. And then there's also some emergency services money that can be done as well, because of the no access for emergency vehicles.
And are you facilitating the applications for the grants?
I am the planning liaison, so I had to review them all before they went to CMAP, and I'm for all of the South Suburban communities.
How much of the project from Phase One to Phase Four, do you think that grants can cover percentage wise? Do you think?
A hundred percent.
From Phase One to Phase Four?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. No, nobody can do a bridge, a grade separation without grants, it's way too expensive. No, not even IDOT, they go after grants for this sort of thing.
Yes. Wow, that sounds great.
We would like to thank you, and I will ask everybody to give a round of applause. And again, we'd like to thank you for your participation, in fact, it was your idea, you consensualized this, and certainly thank you and welcome you for that, and she was born and raised in the head, which, and so this bridge and Frank's, thank you adversely for she was born, and so that you wanted yourself to improve the situation, so we appreciate that, we appreciate the help. And I appreciate the letter of petition, I appreciate the board members for working with us and the village and the village attorney, and at this time, I'll ask the village attorney to give us a steal as well. On this project? Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
A good lawyer knows when he should shut up. I can't follow and improve upon her presentation, except this young lady has done a lot of work with a lot of people on our behalf, and this is not a sure thing. As she said, in July, this is going to become public knowledge, more public than what it is now, and for reasons of confidentiality, we had to keep this under wraps. Public comments are going to be important, and if you can take, take the time to make a comment how necessary this bridge or underpass, we don't know what they're going to recommend, is necessary for this community, if you can just take the time to make those simple comments. I've been associated with this village two years after I got my law degree as its village prosecutor, and about four years before I got my law degree, working for the lawyer who was the prosecutor, and that goes back to 1968, and doing legal work one way or the other for over fifty years. And throughout those fifty years, that intersection has been a thorn in the side of everyone in this community and the South Suburbs. I beat my head against the wall prosecuting the railroads, because they blocked the intersection, and then they got the federal authorities involved, and we had cases against us, against all the communities prohibiting us from prosecuting them, tying up the intersections. So it's very frustrating, and you have no idea, about nine months ago or so, maybe a little bit less than that, there was a gentleman sat here, talked to the community and to the trustees about the delay he suffered, because he couldn't get from one side of the tracks to the other side, because the train was stopped, and how he had to walk to work off every day, and walk home, crossing this intersection. If we're fortunate enough to get this, that will never happen again. The whole concept behind this took a lot of planning, a lot of, just to get the application on file. As Leslie has said, you saw parts of it surfacing, the Complete Streets Program. That will not only include, you know, an underpass or overpass, but also pedestrian walkways, who also necessarily include a bicycle path. So a lot of things, wonderful things are going to happen if that passes, and we get it, but we're not the only ones, and I cannot stress this enough, we are not the only community competing for those funds. The more input from citizens, the more input from the community here, that this is necessary and needed, will be gratefully helpful to our opportunity that we have to get it. You know, it's not a sure thing. The money's out there, but there's competition, and we've done a lot of things so that our application would be very high up, if not the highest. So a lot of credit goes to the people who work behind the scenes, and who brought these things to our village, so all we ask is that you help too, and make those comments when the time, opportunity comes, and we will let you know when you have that opportunity. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Claybrook may want to give a comment, what it means that we attended as Leslie was often in the process of putting this great policy together.
Yeah, it was, uh, first of all, it was a good learning experience with the Complete Streets Program, to put together the, uh, the packet or what have you, and I think, I think, and it'll be a, well, I know it's definitely needed, and a good added thing to our building, and I just wanted to, Leslie, thank you, Matt, also, for all your hard work and everything.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this will be a major undertaking for the village of Burnham, and I know it's going to take quite a few years to, you know, for it to come to completion. We're going to claim it, we're going to believe it's going to happen, and I intend to see it through, so I intend to be sitting right here when it's going to happen. Thanks again. And now in the mayor's report, I would like to say that spring is up on us, and so we hope that people begin to start cleaning up their properties. The landscape will be out, doing some landscape work, and, you know, continuing to start to unify the community in Burnham. And I would also say that this is a political season, and I would say that, that we should not put one another down in order to build yourself up. And I heard a saying, one that says, just because you put my counter out, it doesn't make yours shine brighter. At this time, so we will go, Central Clerk is not in, we will go to Public Education, Health, Safety, and Welfare, Trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I try to be as brief as possible, you know, I always have much to say. I'll let see. Burnham Fire Department awarded a grant by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Assistance to Verify This Grant Program.
And we will bring it up again once we get to the finance committee, just another announcing of the last time announcing here today. Just a few.
Did she brought a sample of?
Okay, he can do that.
Okay, all right, okay. Just wanted to remind you, community beat me. Just wanted to remind you, Community Beat Meeting, April the eighteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven P.M., that will be here at the Village Hall. Zep Senior Lawn Services, if there's anyone sixty years or older that's living in a single family owned with nobody to help them, you can receive this weekly weather permitting lawn mowing service. To apply for the program and schedule a free lawn assessment, there's a brief application that you must fill out, and if you need one, just see me and I'll make sure that you get a top, an application. Thornton Township has a self empowerment through self-defense, and it's for Thornton Township Women. It is held Saturday, March sixteenth, twenty nineteen. It's going to be held at Riverdale, one forty-three twenty-three South Halston. You will learn self-defense, increase your awareness, and it's a crime prevention, and how to use your body as a weapon. So these are very good techniques to know and to learn. Again, this is, well, they started one time, but there should be another class, and it's at one forty-three twenty-three South Halston, and it's in Riverdale. Free mortgage, and this is a one-day-only, save your Illinois home, and this is going to be, it's going to be Saturday, March thirtieth, ten to three A.M., it's at the South Halston Community Center. Are you unemployed or earning less than before? Are you behind on your mortgage payments? Do you need to leave your home through a short sale or deed in lieu of foreclosure? So again, this is going to be held Saturday, March the thirtieth, South Halston Community Center, and it's from ten to three A.M. So if you may not need this service, you may know someone that is, that is in need of this service. Pardon? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, ten A.M. to three P.M. Okay, so that, that's all, that's a, one thing. If you know of anyone that needs a, a sign for their window, Neighborhood Watch Sign, there are some available, we have some in the office, you can just ask for them, and it's called Neighborhood Watch Sign, we call the police, so. And again, if you see something, say something, and if you, even in doubt, still call the police. Thank you.
Okay, trustee, for your court information, public works and building, trustee Claybrook?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public work was out this week doing general cleaning, the alleys, and also cold patching potholes and things, and I just wanted to ask all the residents to, if you have any issues or any problems, you know, feel free to call the village, leave a message, state your address and what your issue is, and we're trying to take care of it as best we can. And that's all of that.
And thank you, trustee Claybrook, for your court and information, and ordinance resolution in plan, and trustee Garcia.
Good evening.
Discussion on consideration of taking action to pass or not pass Resolution Number Twenty Nineteen R-004, a resolution authorizing the execution of the County Community Development Block Grant Program, Twenty Nineteen Program Year, application for the village of Burnham.
Now, this grant, if we received this, and we normally do every year, receive funds through the community block grant, as many of you remember, we did a sewer realignment at a hundred and forty persons sagging up last fall, so, and now we can be able to come back and research the streets, so we'll be doing that whole block and get that grant for that, so. That sewer work there did quite well, it had, it drained quite a bit there, the problem having not flooded, so that was a help, and put a new, it put a new insert inside, you know, sewer line, and so that was a big help, so. Were there any questions from the board?
How about percentage of deterioration with that sewer line?
Did you mean the old one?
Yes. What, what made us choose this one? Was there a percentage of deterioration, or was it, what were the obvious problems?
Well, that was a sinkhole that kept submerging in the streets, you know, kept coming up, and we were filling it, public work was filling it, and last fall, it would keep coming back, so it was really safe to have it, and we certainly didn't want, you know, someone to, sometime want to have an accident, and we probably wanted to get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Is there another question?
So may I motion to pass Resolution Number Twenty Nineteen R-004, a resolution authorizing the execution of the County Community Development Block Grant Program, Twenty Nineteen Program Year, application for the village of Burnham.
If there's a motion on the approach to pass this resolution, number Two Nineteen R-004, the motion is made by trustee Garcia, so we need a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Second by trustee Cap? Please follow along.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Our motion passed, thank you. Do you have anything else, trustee Garcia?
Yes, I would just like to mention that we did have a job fair, we did have that, March thirteenth.
March thirteenth.
We had, it was a really good turnout, we had about ninety people show up, out of that, forty-three were offered jobs, and out of that, I think twenty, about twenty or so were Burnham residents. And, and I have something else coming up, if you're interested, we have something similar to that, I have some flyers here, or if you know anyone that's looking for work, you know, glad we passed one out, we have them contact us, and we'll be glad to work with them. Also, kudos to everyone about. Yeah, and trustee Greer actually had to stay there because we had so many people, they actually didn't finish until like five o'clock. I unfortunately had to leave early because I had another meeting to go to, so she was actually the one that ended up closing and putting everything back together.
She won't get in there. And thank you very much, trustee Garcia, for your report and information. Finance, trustee Cap?
Yeah, hi, I have an issue here. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorization for the acceptance of a grant by the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand and five hundred and eighty-three dollars in order to purchase new self-containing breathing apparatus and authorization to contribute five percent of the purchase price, which is sixty-seven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty cents, the village of Burnham will contribute its portion as set forth in the attached Exhibit A and Exhibit B. I guess we do have questions with Andy.
As I said, if the lowest median, that's six to seven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty cents, will not cost the taxpayer any money of Burnham, because the money going to come to the sale of some property that we just sold. We anticipate the closing of a normal price, but we are talking about that next week. Chief, do you have anything to add?
I just, I just wanted to say, again, thank you for your support for submitting this grant proposal. It's a highly competitive grant, not awarded to every department that applies, but just in case everybody, somebody didn't know what a self-contained breathing apparatus device is, this is it. This is probably the most important piece of safety equipment a firefighter has. Ours are, this, this is what we're going to buy. This is a demo model that, that Air One Equipment has allowed us to train on and use for some time now. Our bottles will be a little cleaner with our logo on it, but, but again, this, this may look like a big clunky device, this is actually a very high-tech and advanced piece of equipment that will allow our firefighters to go into hazardous atmospheres, whether they be burning buildings, smoke-filled rooms, rooms where there are high concentrations of carbon monoxide.
Chlorine.
We do, they are CBRN, we do have CBRN masks that are qualified, CBRN, so for those, hopefully, I don't know if there's any sites other than maybe the water plant that has that, but anyways, so just, just so everybody can see what, what these things are and what we're going to be getting.
So how many of those would we be able to purchase?
Well, we're, we're getting a total of twenty-one of these harnesses, we're getting forty-two bottles, twenty-four face pieces, we're also getting a, a device called a RIT bottle, a RIT pack, which is just like this, except bigger, that allows a firefighter to, that firefighter will carry into a building to put onto a down firefighter or patient that, so, so you're essentially bringing an extra one in, but with a lot more air capacity. And we're getting some other options with it to enhance its utilitarian value.
How much does it weigh, one weight?
This is about twenty-five pounds.
Really?
Yeah.
Very important, these are the split.
And this is another success story for the village of Burnham, and we thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
And I could say before, we are making progress here in the village, and we just need everyone to work with us, and myself, and board, and trustees, and everybody, and we'll continue to move in the right direction, and I'm committed to make sure we do that, and you got my word on it, so thank you.
One question on chief Horberg. It says that there's a, what contributes portions, the sixty-seven forty-one, as attached in Exhibit A or B, is there an Exhibit A or B available?
That would be, that should have been submitted with the original grant, is that correct, that portion?
Yeah. This is, I don't remember which one's A or B, but that's what it is right there.
Okay.
It's, it's a letter and it's the invoice. It's a letter of explanation, and it's the actual invoice from Air One Equipment.
Oh, wonderful.
Sure, go ahead.
And great job, chief Horberg and everyone involved in applying for and actually getting the grant, great job.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
And, and I've always told you, you know, continue to do what you do in operating and keeping our costs minimal. And I'd also like to reiterate that regardless if it's a, from sale of a real estate, or if it's a, the money's from slot machines, or if it's money from grants, or, or tax levy, it all belongs to the residents, regardless of what the source is.
No one has ever questioned whether it belongs to the residents or not, without saying that it did not come from the taxpayer's money, I ain't over that saying, that does need an explanation, we understand that, and the money will be spent properly, so that's no doubt about that. So if we don't have any more questions, then we will proceed.
And that, that's my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to authorize for the accept, authorization for the acceptance of the grant by the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand and five hundred and eighty-three dollars in order to purchase new self-containing breathing apparatus and authorization to contribute five percent of the purchase price, which is six thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents, village of Burnham will contribute its portion as set forth in attached Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
And as a motion approved by trustee Cap to approve this grant for the fire department, a hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and with the resolution by them submitting it, paying sixty-seven hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents, could we have a second, please?
A second.
A second by trustee Claybrook.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes, our motion passed, thank you. Okay, public utilities, trustee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We will have an electronic recycle day in May or April, April or May, I'll let you know the date once we set it. And Commonwealth Edison has a program called Helping Hand. They will assist residential customers with fifty percent of their bills if they're suffering some type of hardship, financial or medical, and if, there's a number, anyone can call if they need this assistance to see if they qualify, it's eight eight eight, eight zero six, two two, seven three. So anyone that's interested, I'm sorry, the number is eight eight eight, eight zero six, two two, seven three. So anyone that could use the help, call, or if you know someone that could use the help, give them the number.
Thank you, trustee Richardson, for that reporting, your information, Park and Recreation, trustee Bonner?
No report at this time.
Make your presentation, petitions, communications, or orders, and best motions. Is there any unfinished business? Is there a new business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
What about the emergency sewer cleaning?
I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
On Chip Moivano's emergency sewer cleaning?
I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Transparency?
We need a second.
Don't worry about it.
Would a court take a rule?
Did I have a second? I'm sorry.
A second.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Cap, I stood myself, yes. Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.